Call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. June the 2nd. Ask Commissioner Allen to open us with an invocation.
Thanks, sir. If you'd all please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening to do what is hopefully right and good in your sight for the citizenry of Columbia County. We ask that you be with us in both our words, our thoughts, our actions, and our deeds as we go forth tonight to try to serve the people that have elected us to be here. We thank you for the countless blessings that you have offered upon us to live in this great community and this great nation. We ask that you be with so many people throughout our nation and now throughout the world that are hurting, that feel that they are not being heard. We ask that you be with those that also are trying their very best to just hold on to what they have. We ask that peace be over our nation and over our land and that the division and the anger diminish on both sides. Safety reign. We ask these things in your name.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic, one nation, God visible.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meeting of May the 19th in your package. Approval, I'll accept the motion to do so.
Motion to accept.
Second. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Also, you have the meetings from the budget hearing from May 19th. Same request, if they all accept.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Then we'll just want to welcome everyone to the Board of Commissioners meeting. Actually, I believe we have two candidates here. Bob Willis, Bob, you here, Bob? And Don Skinner, both candidates for the commission. Glad you guys are here. We do have, under special recognitions and presentations, some folks that have requested to speak. So what we're going to do is move those down to speak on the issue, or better yet, when we get to your issues, so that you don't just speak now and then an hour later we get to it. So bear with me. I have a list and Mr. Reese Crowley will correct me if I... Thank you. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. It's full of items that have been through committee and received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. If they still, if that still meets with your pleasure, I'll accept. A motion to approve them all is one vote.
Motion to accept.
Second. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Right into the debate agenda. We'll go straight to Commissioner Allen.
Sir. Regarding the rezone, RZ 200209, rezoned from R2 to P1, I make a motion to deny the rezoning from R2 to P1 for property located at a tax map of 073B004.
Second. Dr.
This was going to be a tax service that was originally applied for a home ок however the owner did not actually live in the house or the owner of the business didn't live in the house. We've gone radio silent on this. Contact with the property owner or the owner.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion to deny the variance request for property located at tax map 073B004.
Second.
Variance for that, the one you just denied, this was a variance to go along with it.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from C2 to C3 for property located at tax map 074087.
Second.
Before a contractor's office, they currently own two parcels immediately. Jason, to this parcel, this will parcel connectivity to allow them to build out these two different.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variances to Section 90-98, List of Lot and Structure Requirements, Section 90-139, Buffers and Screening, and Section 90-147, H1C, Use Provisions for Property Located at Tax Map 074087, Subject to Conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020, Planning Commission Report.
Second. Dr.
This is a variance for that parcel that was just rezoned. They do have a 20-foot requirement, if you can see on the screen, that does a butt to some storage sheds, so they're reducing the buffer down to a 10-foot buffer. Heavier landscaping up around the parking lot. What's already allowed on the preview on the parcels next door.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve. Second, we are with Major S1. Tax map, I apologize, my packet is not lining up. I make a motion to approve the request of a major revision to the existing S1 zoning for a portion of property located at tax map 036023A, Subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020, Planning Commission Report.
For a sawmill to be used, it's a larger lot. They're looking to use bakers of this lot for a sawmill. Owner actually has a office out of county where he gets a lot of material used instead of going to the landfill. Freeze and a out and actually come to the sawmill, he can saw them. That for, I believe he told us at the planning commission, he used it for trailer lumber. Trailers, saw cuts that type of lumber, so it'll be a personal-use sawmill, not a powdered lumber-type sawmill. Trailer-mounted saw that can be pulled around, but it's bakers of the, I believe it's 19-acre parcel, only two acres of that actually operating.
Neighbors have a problem?
I've been made aware. One was here at the planning.
Can I ask you a question? Does this affect the boatsheds that were approved back in '09, I believe? Does that go away with this, or they could still? Okay, so the remainder, the remainder can still, okay.
More questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe the next item, Mr. Bill Knoll. Have a presentation?
Yes, sir.
You'll just state your name and address for the record, sir?
Okay, I'm Bill Knoll, N-O-L-L. I live at 200 I live at 2006 Egress Circle in Evans, and I'm representing the town homeowners in River Island on this one subject. The purpose of this PUD was to reduce building setbacks for individual lots on Egress Circle. The staff recommendation came back that the setback at 210, 212, and 214 remain at five feet. The planning commission disagreed with the staff recommendation and went ahead and passed it to say, yes, we can get rid of the setback. This is the area that we're talking about. This is Egress Circle. If you could see in the middle of it, there's a green space that runs down the middle of it. On the left-hand side, there are four houses on one side and three on the other. All of these houses have the same setback. And of course, they have a sidewalk that runs down each one of those because the front of the houses face the green space. Myself and three other owners are on the right side there of the four townhomes that are already there. The part that we're concerned about is that open space at the top there where there's room for three additional townhomes. What the builder developer has proposed is to get rid of that setback and move the townhomes, make them five feet bigger, and therefore then moving the sidewalk. And as you can see, well, my drawing there, excuse me, I'm, it's not always the greatest. But basically, they'll take out the four trees that are there already. Now granted, the developer can plant more trees. But basically, when we sit on our front porch, we get to see that the side of the other townhomes, if they extend them another five feet there. Now, this is, River Island has about 300 homes in it right now. This is just two sections. One is the section we live in and the section next to us. All the houses there are about 10 feet apart, so they're fairly close. And I could maybe make these bigger, but I didn't. But if you look, all of these homes have the same setback as the one next to it. So they're all, when you look at them and they're very close together, they all have the same setback and have the same view out of the front. The developer proposes that this one building with three townhomes in it would be different from that and have no setback. This is what they look like right now. The one on the left there shows the ones that are currently there. The one on the right shows where the sidewalk is, and it's, basically, they're asking for the townhomes to extend out another five feet and put that jig into the sidewalk and make those larger. Now, when I bought in 2017, I asked the developer, what are you going to build next to me? He gave me a stack of drawings that were 12 of them that showed the other three townhomes that are the same size as the one that we're in right now. So I tried to do my homework to make sure that what I was looking at was what we were going to get and what was going to be in the lot next to me. Now the developer wants to make these five feet bigger and encroach on the green space that we already have. So this was the drawings that I saw in 2017, and now he's adding five feet or wants to add five feet to that. In conclusion, I request that you approve the staff recommendation and not the planning commission, and approve the fact that the setback for 210, 212, and 214, Egress Circle, remain at five feet and that all the townhomes will look the same and not be a five-foot additional part there. Now, Sunday, I did go through the whole and looked at all 300 homes, and there's not one that's set forward or backward more than the others. And that's, so what you'll be approving, if you approve the planning commissions to get rid of the setback, you'll have one building out of 300 that has an additional five feet without the setback to it. So I'm asking you, just looking at it from a logic standpoint, to keep the setback for these three townhomes. Do y'all have any questions?
Mr. Dr. Did anybody hear? Sure. Why the, why the move back?
Well, first and foremost, we developed the original townhomes. Actually, Jimmy Garen built those townhomes. And coincidentally, planning staffs told me that some of the porches in his section extended into the five-foot setback and are probably in violation. That's what Will Butler told me. We're only talking about porches. There's three units per land here. There's, I brought a drawing. I didn't know if the planning would have it. Oh, here you are. So we have the porch in the middle that extends out, and we have one that this area between the front of the units and the front of the lot is 6.8 feet right here. And there's only one porch extending all the way to the line, and there's one that extends about 3.2 feet from the line. We're talking about two porches here. The units sat on the market a long time, the ones we originally. So we've worked really hard to make better plans. And the better plans, to make a townhome plan good, you want more natural light coming in. A deeper unit is better than a, than a salary unit because you can put more windows in the courtyard and make a bigger courtyard space, which we've done here, here, and here. I don't think you can compare this to the rest of the River Island because these are the only units in this section that back up to a 75-foot wide park. So they're not like every other streetscape. These actual units face the park. And so the view off the front porch, the only thing that would obstruct the view they have now is that there'd be one porch that sticks out five feet, which coincidentally, they're in unit, they're already in the five-foot setback, according to the planning staff. So for this reason, we think it's, we're going to, if we take down any trees, we can plant back trees that are larger. There's actually, in reworking the sidewalk, there's been a, there's been a water retainer issue that has been sitting there. We're actually going to repair that. There's a big drain that's buried underground that we're going to fix and tie in some storm drains there at our expense to take care of an area in the homeowners association's land that is problematic. So at the end of the day, we're talking about two porches, one that only is still three foot back and one that stands all the way to the line. But the porches are key to making these units consistent with the other units. And we want to keep them the same size as the existing units because I feel like if we made them smaller, then they'd sell for a price point that's less than their units and would be a, they may not realize it, but there's townhomes selling there for significantly less. They could be, their price of their property could be jeopardized. So we think it's great for the development. We're going to replace it and do just as good a job as we did when we initially installed it. And I think we can address all those concerns. At the end of the day, it'll be a better product and a better place than it is today.
Mr. Mills, are you saying that it's not actually five feet past the existing ones?
Well, those lots are deeper than, they're slightly deeper. As you can see, they're slightly deeper than his are now. So we just have the porch in this one would be sticking all the way to the property line. Where his porch, this porch here, I believe, extends all the way to the property line.
Only one of the three proposed actually has, needs a zero setback. The two flanking it.
That's correct. This is the only one that would extend all the way.
The center unit has
That center unit?
An extended porch.
Yeah, and I think you need those porches to keep the elevations. These are units we build in Charleston. They sell quite well and very attractive. But they'll be built with similar quality, different builder, just because Mr. Garen's no longer with us. But you know, these lots have sat here for 10 years undeveloped. I think everybody in this section wants us to move forward and get done, be out of there. And I think if we found a plan that works, and we'll sell these three and hopefully move on to the others quickly. And there's an expansive, it's an expansive park, so really, when you, on the porch there, looking across, you've still got a big, wide view. I don't think it would jeopardize.
So if it's a porch, it's just a roof over with no sides, or is it sides in a roof?
We have an elevation. I believe in the, they did have one. I turned it in, but we don't have the ones.
Do some examples. I don't know that they're.
Probably, there they are. So this, this is the porch that extends all the way through, and it's a double porch.
Mr. Knoll, does this help answer some of your concerns? Is there anything short of denying this completely and putting them all back in a straight line that would? Come up here so we can get it on the record.
One of his comments was that the current townhomes exceeded into the setback. That they did, okay? But the total from the front to the back was 112 feet. Okay, even when you went in the setback. Now, he wants to go into a new setback that's 117 feet. So when he puts that on there, even the side of his building is going to be five feet longer than our building. Okay, without the, when I'm not looking at porches. So he basically is still asking for five feet more than we currently have on the current townhomes. And as I showed you, those apartments, not those houses down below, there wasn't one that came out more than the others. So this, like I said before, this is one where he's got one building that's out further than all the other buildings that he's built in there, whether they're in a green space or not. So I'm just looking to make sure we have a standard there, and he's putting porches, and actually, he's putting, I didn't realize when I looked, he's got an upper porch and a lower porch on that one, which additionally blocks some of the view. So all I'm asking is y'all keep a standard that you've used in the past everywhere else and not make this one exception. And remember that the planning commission workers wanted to disapprove this as well. So I guess I don't like to use this dirty word, but it looks like that politics plays something in this, the way they got the planning commission to do it.
How so? Do you feel like something improper was?
I don't know, but I cannot see that you go and approve something that's different from everything else in the subdivision. Okay?
Regarding your previous comments, sir, we have notes that staff recommended approval with conditions, not disapproval.
No.
One of the conditions was the five-foot setback is denied.
The staff said, do not approve the five-foot setback. The planning commission disregarded that and changed that.
Gotcha.
And I'm asking you to go back to what the staff recommended, which is keep the five-foot setback so all the townhomes are the same distance forward into the green belt. That's why I use the dirty word "politics" there, because the staff had one thing and the planning commission something else. That's my comments. Thank you.
Sir. We didn't speak to staff.
Mr. Mills, are you good with the conditions, the revised conditions that's set forth by the planning?
We were. We asked, we asked that that one be removed, and there weren't any politics involved. Al Dempsey was the primary spokesperson, and he said, "I still can't figure out anybody's giving me a good reason with a 75-foot park why this, we wouldn't allow two porches to be built into it. I don't have a good reason." Because they named trees being removed. He says, "You can replace those." Drainage is, they named drainage as an issue, and they said, "You can fix the drainage." And he said, "I just don't see how five-foot porch entering into a big view corridor that exists today makes that much of a difference." And, you know, we created everything that's great about that right now. We wouldn't do anything. We have more to lose than anybody. We do something that jeopardizes the quality there. But we found a product that I think will help this section move forward and be done with it, and there's a lot of residents there that are tired of looking at vacant lots and dirt. And I think this is a great compromise to make it happen. And I've had multiple land planners tell me that you have something, if you look out over an ocean, it can be somewhat boring view. It's a much more interesting view if you've got a tree or something in the foreground. So I mean, you could also look at that in response to this, that columns, not a wall, but columns sticking out into the part of five-foot or 75-foot view actually add to the view.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Yeah, did you have something, man? Mr. Carlyle, could you go to the photographs of the samples that they sent? There's, that's a four-piece unit, but keep going. That actually, the full units that have the, that actually have the porches on them.
Drawing?
No, no, it's an actual photograph. There's one over the, on top of the other. There. So like this top example here, is this what we're discussing? We're discussing where there's an overhanging porch in this case. Maybe it's not overhanging. But then you have the portico there with a lid on it, and then you have the one next to it that has the columns. Is that?
Those are identical floor plans. We will use materials that are the same. That has a lot of party board siding and whatnot and different colors.
But architecturally, this is what we're talking about.
This is the floor plan with a little bit, slightly different fronts and different materials. I think we'll need to introduce brick to be consistent with the other.
But in terms of spacing or depth, this is.
Yeah, spacing and depth.
So the fascia, the face of the buildings are level, and it is truly just the first overhanging porch, second portico, and then the third double porch.
Correct, except in this situation, there's only three.
Right. That helps.
Thank you.
Heard the discussion, debate. Was there a motion?
Can I ask?
Please.
Scott, what was staff's thoughts when they recommended that not be?
Yeah, I think in part, some of the discussion centered around the fact that they'd already built some of the units and at that depth, you know, could they make that work? And obviously, you know, there was some belief that, you know, clearly it had been done before, so it could be done again. But of course, you know, there are other alternatives you can modify. It is worth pointing out that the original approvals for the units that are, that have been built do encroach into that five-foot setback. And there is no variance that has been granted to reduce that five-foot setback. So those porches were, you know, built in the required setback. So part of the reason why they work is because they're not necessarily in, you know, compliance with our ordinance for that section.
So do we need to do a variance request to get?
Well, that's not what's before you tonight. That's a separate issue.
Do we need to do that for?
That would be one way to clean up that particular matter. It's a question of whether or not grant the variance tonight to, you know, allow that, you know, shorter distance, or do you decide to allow them to have, you know, the greater depth and build it as he's proposed?
Theoretically, if we were to deny this variance and then go forward and audit the existing structures and deny those variances, they'd have to remove the porches theoretically?
Correct.
I'll defer legal. Right.
Builder's no longer with us. Builder's no longer with us. Please.
When we put the, he brought it up, and Mills brought it up, both, that the current townhomes extended into the setback. And that appears to be true. But what we're looking at now, if you approve going into the new setback, then these new townhomes are still going to be five feet longer than the current ones.
Yes, sir.
So it sort of said, when they say that, start with, it assumes, well, if we went to the setback and they go in the setback, they're going to be the same length, and that's not the case. They're still going to be five feet more, longer. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any more discussion?
So just to be clear, is most of, whether it's a straight line or not, is it a matter of taste? Is that what I'm hearing?
All about a view. Argument, at one point, he did make was also that the sidewalk would not be straight. The sidewalk would not be straight regardless of how you vote tonight. The sidewalk will have to jog around these buildings because, like he said, the property line is five foot longer on these three parcels than it is on his part. Sidewalk has to turn. That's not really a consideration.
Oh, it is if you.
No, sir. They cannot put a, a sidewalk cannot be built on that private property, so they will have to take the sidewalk around that private property. Lot sticks out five foot past your lot. The sidewalk, if you look, lines up directly into their properties. They will have to take that HOA sidewalk around that property. If not, the sidewalk will be on private property and the owner, not anybody can use it. Not what HOA wants. Sidewalk will have to be shifted, keep it on public property or HOA property for the neighbors to use. Sidewalk will have to be shifted, keep it on public property or HOA property for the neighbors to use.
Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the request. Major PUD revision for property located at tax map 081579589, subject to the revised conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission.
Second. Any other discussion or debate? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Carries. On to the next. 1A7.
I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the existing PUD for property located at tax map 073046B.
Second.
This one has a sign that was, um, taken out by someone who didn't know where the lanes were, I guess. Um, currently a water line behind the sign where the sign should go to meet our code. Therefore, we don't want them putting it on top of a water line. They're asking for a zero-foot setback to put, it'll be on private property. However, it'll be right up against the right-of-way line. Requires a five-foot setback. So, this is a variance allowing them to build their sign without impacting our water line.
Question?
There was no issues other than just the setback?
The, the sign, actually, the right-of-way is pretty wide through there, so it's setback a good ways from the travel lane. There's right-turn lanes, acceleration lanes, so it, there's no tight distance. I think it's...
But it won't get taken out again, maybe?
I can't promise you that. Daughter driving now.
Yeah, me too.
All been warned. Say, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
All right. I would like to make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from R1 and S1, B2, for a portion of property located at tax map 069008B101B.
Second.
I'm playing catch-up. This is, um, at the intersection of the New Gateway Boulevard Extension and Wrightsboro Road. This is to allow a gas pump service station to go on that corner. They do have more property. However, they're only asking to rezone the front piece. Parcels behind it will stay as they're currently zoned. They'll come back to us in the future if we decide to change.
Questions?
Mr. Schlauch, can you detail, there's some traffic improvements that are going to go along with, uh, this project for...
There are. There, the, the owner of the property has entered into an agreement with the county to pay for some turn lanes to be put in on the road as we build the turn lanes for Gateway Boulevard Extension. Made it clear whether or not you vote up or down on this project. He wants to go in turn lanes in for whatever project he does end up building in the future. That agreement y'all approved a while ago, so actually build those turn lanes.
And I know you'll address this as they bring in the plans and whatever, but there is a turn lane off of New Gateway Boulevard going into entrance, uh, of the station. Is that correct?
Left, left turn lane into...
Left turn lane off of, off of Gateway Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I know on this next one, we've got some folks who want to speak. I'm going to call Mr. Lionel Prather. You have a presentation?
Do we still have I1A9?
Oh, my bad, sorry.
I have one more motion.
My bad.
For that. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for variances to section 9098, List of Lot and Structural Requirements, 9139, buffers and screening, and 9147G10B, Use Provisions for Portions of Property Located at Tax Map 069008B and 101B. Reduce Building Setbacks to Three Feet, Wave Structural Buffer Requirements, and Wave Hours of Operation Requirements Subject to the Conditions Enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
The big one here is the 24-hour-a-day use, that use is not allowed full-time during the day. Parents will be allowed them to stay open 24 hours a day. Setbacks should allow for the dumpster pad to be up against that adjoining parcel that they do want, and on developing in the future. That is not an issue to staff.
Any of the neighbors complain?
Nobody close. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Now I'm caught up to item 10, so Prather, I believe you have a...
It's a full...
Presentation?
It's all over.
And we have three other people who want to speak.
Evening, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, this is my planner. I'm going to let him do my presentation for me.
Thanks.
If I had to answer a question?
Thank you.
I figured y'all recognized that I was not Lionel Prather.
Because I like switching bait and switch thing going here. Please state your name and address with the records and you have five minutes, sir.
Okay. Uh, my name is Wallace Milling. I am with Whitmer Jones Kiefer.
You have two fine children?
I have two fine children. Well, I actually have three. That's just before the third one came along. Um, and, uh, I'm with Whitmer Jones Kiefer. We're in Bluffton, South Carolina. We're planners and landscape architects, as Lionel mentioned, and we're here to share with you very briefly, uh, the vision, uh, for Greenpoint, which is the, uh, resounding request you have before you. Um, the first time I stood up here before the Planning Commission, I was just following a great report by planning staff, but, uh, this time I'm going it alone. So, I, I do want to say before I get started that it has been a pleasure to, uh, work with, um, y'all's staff here and to come before your Planning Commission as well. Good experience. So, um, I'm trying to set this thing up so that I can get full page. So, uh, the Prather, Prather family has hired us to, um, to do this planning work for them. This, um, property that we're showing, this... Get this out of the way. Here we go. Uh, this property's been owned by the Prather, uh, family for plus or minus 75 years and, uh, the Prathers expressed, uh, to our group their desire to make this a legacy project for, uh, not only their family, uh, but for the greater community. Um, they're very invested, as I'm sure most of you know, in, in the Harlem area and in the county and they want to remain invested and, um, develop this master-planned, uh, community as a great place for the community, uh, to create value in the community, not only for their family, but, uh, for the community at large. So, that, that's the underlying, um, and guiding, um, principle for, uh, this, this whole vision, which I'm going to share with you very briefly. Uh, you, you guys have seen the narrative, so I'm just going to kind of hit the high notes. This is a mixed-use, master-planned, um, community. It's not a subdivision. Uh, it seeks to be, uh, a great place, a complete place, where, uh, people can, uh, live, uh, work, play, uh, and, and enjoy recreation. Uh, so, it's more than just lots and single-family homes. Uh, it's everything that you would have in a true small town. And it seeks to be, uh, a part of the greater community. Um, it's 834 acres, uh, and it's located in the, the old Pumpkin Center area and it's right down the road from Harlem and it seeks to be a part of the context of Harlem. Uh, it doesn't seek to be a place from anywhere USA. It, uh, seeks to be a, a quality-built environment and to fit into that context that exists there. So, we seek to, um, follow the, the goals that are laid out in, in the county's vision. Um, so I'm not going to list all those, but you all know what your 2035 vision plan looks like and, and, and I just want to say how, uh, fortunate we feel to be working in a place that is, uh, so blessed during such a trying time nationally and throughout the world right now, uh, where there is economic, um, progress and work to be done and you guys are just very fortunate and, and we appreciate the opportunity to be working here. Um, so, Greenpoint would hopefully take advantage of those opportunities to create a great place in that environment. Uh, preserving green space, 20% of open space would be preserved. Um, the, the underlying theme of, of this place is to provide a lot of different types of building. Um, and, um, that diversity is a major, um, guiding principle for this, uh, development. And so, there will be everything from natural open space all the way to a village, uh, type feel. So, you can see on this slide that, you know, there will be parks and green space and preserved lands. There will be large lots, uh, for more, what we would call like a farmstead or an estate-style home. Uh, there will be suburban-type development, which you see all over, uh, Columbia County currently. And there will be, um, uh, more compact development where, um, single-family homes are, are a little closer together and then homes and businesses, um, in the same context in a village walkable, uh, scale. All those things would be included in Greenpoint. We believe that that type of planning, um, and community building, uh, is the ultimate, um, sustainability. Uh, it's how you create a place that, that stands the test of time. And, um, so that's what we're trying to achieve with this master plan. So, here's some images of green space character, uh, places where neighbors can gather together and get to know one another and, uh, enjoy, um, community events, participate in the community. Um, place where there's safety. The kids can ride bikes, um, to school as well as to the park, fields. There's the potential for active recreation here if the county so desires to have it. Then what we've got here are just some slides of some of the different types of streets and roads you would have through the community. They range from very rural feeling, um, to the suburban and on into more village and commercial styles. And all these photographs, a lot of them are taken from places that you all are familiar with. Uh, some of them are in Hammond's Ferry, Riverwood, uh, other master-planned communities, uh, in, in this general area. So, this, this slide shows the overall master framework plan and how the different, uh, the different districts of development, where these different housing and, uh, commercial types of the development will be, um, mixed together. And here's some product imagery that I'll just go through and this is more of the estate style, style, large lot. Um, these are more of the suburban-style lots that are larger. You know, these, these type lots have more open space in the back, um, probably, you know, more outdoor living areas. Folks who can afford to maintain that type of lifestyle and landscape would, would, would use these lots. And then we get into, uh, a little more compact village residential.
I'm going to have to ask you to speed up just a bit.
Okay. And then some of the more compact, um, mixed-use areas where businesses and, uh, commercial, small, small businesses and restaurants and cafes would mix in with the residential. So, that's it. Uh, there's, there's also some commercial inspiration, uh, again, very familiar to a place like Riverwood. And that completes the presentation. Again, uh, just want to reiterate, this, this is a place, not a subdivision. Uh, it's a place where people can live, work, play, uh, a pleasing and, and beautiful environment, built environment for, for the community overall. Yes, sir.
How long have you been working on this project? Several, several year, or your company or whoever? I mean, this is not something new in, in the first stage of Greenpoint is part of, and whatever. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. Um, there is a, uh, on this slide, you can see down here in the bottom left where the Harlem Middle School is. There is a, there is a current phase of Greenpoint, uh, underway right now, which is single-family homes and this will complement that or be, um, a continuation of that.
But as far as the planning for this that, that you have here, y'all been on, working on this for...
Well, we've been probably underway with Prather's, yeah, 18 months or so.
Uh, another quick, quick question. On some of the streets in here, it had optional, uh, parking or optional sidewalks, both sides. So, how's that going to, to play in to it somewhere down the road?
Well, this is, so, the framework plan that we have in this, this package is, is a conceptual plan.
Right.
Uh, it's meant to give us all something to look at and hold on to and, uh, to use to, uh, project the vision. Flexibility, uh, is one of the guiding principles in any master-planned community. So, the ability to, uh, lay out street types. Um, some street types might be more rural in nature, which probably, uh, wouldn't have as much sidewalks and on-street parking on them. Some streets would be more village-oriented, which would be more walkable, more pedestrian use and, uh, more need for on-street parking, which is off of the lots. So, um, those, those options are available, but not required. That makes sense to you?
It, it does, but you know, a lot of times, and, and a big thing for us or a commissioner and what we get calls about, or I get calls about is, uh, people parking all over the, the streets and all these neighborhoods and it really wasn't maybe built for both sides of parking, all of that stuff. So, just making sure that all of that would be covered.
Sure.
We not opt out and then all of a sudden, the people that are buying these lots, they still have intent of street parking, you know, and...
Yes, sir. But everything here, and I, I'll, um, make sure that I'm not speaking out of turn with Scott, but I, everything here is going to be, uh, subject to approval, site plan approval. So, whenever that section of the development is, is proposed, uh, then at that time, parking will be reviewed and approved, uh, you know, based on the capacity that's required.
On, on that note, you mentioned as those sections come about, can you give us a brief, brief, because it's a huge presentation, a brief summary of the phases and potential timeline that you guys are looking at? What are you? Kind of explain that to everyone.
Yes, sir.
Can I, can I edit your question? If this was approved tonight, when would you start building houses?
The phase one of Greenpoint that is currently underway is, still has quite a few lots, uh, to get...
I'm talking about phase one, though.
So, it's probably five years away. Probably five years away before, uh, residential lots starting to be built. Three to five years.
Are starting to be built. And moving forward, talking about roughly in that first phase and then, you know, timeline, I mean, I, I would say...
That first phase could be three to, three to, three to five years, let's say. And the last phase might be 30 years away. The, you know, some of the highway commercial on Applin Harlem Road might start a little sooner. I mean, this, you know, hopefully the, the sprint will get to go in here soon and then you might see another section of, uh, commercial go in there along with it, soon after it. You'll see some of the larger lots on Wrightsboro Road particularly, start to come online a lot sooner than the tight knit, more compact development. It's, we talk about a lot is critical mass. And so there's going to be a lot of single family, more traditional, what I would say, more conventional, single family lots that you see like in the phase one area, be developed a lot sooner than some of the more compact parts of the development, if that makes sense to everyone.
Questions?
One of the concerns that people have is about traffic. That's a stressed section of road all the way from there up to the interchange. Do you have any information about what's upcoming and how you're planning in traffic improvements? Not only at the entrance to the project, but along Aplin Harlem Road.
We got a traffic expert here, I don't know if you guys know this fellow, but.
The other night I was nodding off, and my wife asked me what I was reading, and I said, I'm reading Mr. Castle's traffic report.
Before Steve gets, I'll just say that traffic has been considered and that connectivity is a huge part of the plan.
Yeah, so well said.
Name, state your name.
And arrest record. Steve Castle, 25 Plantation Hills Drive, Evans, Georgia. Yeah, we analyzed this when Lionel first approached me about it. You have this big development, of course, build it all out, you add it to existing traffic, it's gonna blow up. Pretty much said, you had to do this in five, five-year phases. Let's look at what you're gonna build in five years, let's look at the impact at every driveway and the intersections associated with it, including the roundabout, and then also ten years, but you're really looking at the five-year. What's really gonna happen? Because I give you a good example would be Riverwood off of William Few. You know, before General Wood Parkway was built, everything came in off of William Few, okay? So then you had a project that was planned out, you know, ten years. You end up with 600-foot dual left turn lanes that you don't need because General Wood's open. So it's pretty much like, let's plan for as this thing goes along, because you're really not sure what's gonna happen. A new roadway might be built, something else is going to, you know, or a new, you get an Amazon facility or something like that, or a new road. You just don't know what's gonna split and affect traffic, and then you're stuck with an improvement. Maybe even driveway stub outs and things like that that I can't stand, that are all like pretty much guesswork at that point. But let's look at what you really can do. So the first phase was 100 homes plus the sprint gas station, about 30,000 square feet of retail. Based on that, as you can imagine during what schools in, luckily, we got some counts in before the COVID hit, so we actually had normal traffic patterns. It shows that, you know, you have some impact coming north down onto the roundabout, especially for the right turn movement going on to Wrightsboro. But this development doesn't contribute anything to that movement. Looked back at the DOT concept report, and it actually called for that right turn lane to be on that roundabout. Not sure why it wasn't built or what, I'm sure it had something to do with right away or something. But if you had that, it would handle this development for 10 years. Don't have it, but at the same time, it's, you're looking at one hour during the day. If you look at the evening peak hour, it's, you know, from a traffic standpoint, I understand that people are gonna have an impact. There's gonna be times of the day where you have a harder time getting out of your subdivision and others, but you really look at where you're contributing turning movements, especially for this development. That intersection where everything's gonna mostly split. Yeah, some traffic's gonna go up to I-20, but DOT is just, you know, done a roundabout up there that's basically gonna handle about like a fire hose for the next 10 or 15 years. And so anyway, based on that, Lionel probably wasn't too happy that I said, you're gonna need left turn and right turn lanes at every driveway. So you're not gonna impact the through traffic on Aplin Harlem or Wrightsboro Road. So right now, I think, you know, the foreseeable future, it'll operate pretty efficiently. One, is it gonna be zero impact? No, no growth is, but at the same time, I think he's got a good plan. And as he continues to do this and he needs to hire me to do his work. Have a good plan, or else it'll blow up. So anyway, I think for, you know, for the foreseeable future, you're looking at a pretty efficient operation to this.
Did you just say there'd be a right-hand lane at every?
Yes. Right turn D cell lane, especially coming southbound, you're gonna need that, you're 55 mile an hour speed zone through there. So you're not gonna need it. DOT's criteria, which is who's gonna review this plan, is very low for 55 mile an hour. Looking at 50 per day is gonna require right turn lane and 100 left turns a day require left turn lane. So, and it meets all that criteria, and Lionel's aware of that, and he didn't, he didn't smile, but he didn't flinch.
Questions? Thank you. Mr. David Snipes. Thank you.
My name is David Snipes. Harlem. I'm the president of the homeowners association for Hatcher Glen, the neighborhood located right there at Pumpkin Center. I appreciate the, I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm aware of the restricted time, I'll try to keep my comments, I have prepared comments. However, some of my questions and my points have been addressed, so I'm gonna try to adjust on the fly, so please bear with me.
Good, take your time.
Much thanks to Ms. Crowley for allowing me to set up if I wanted to, but again, I wanted to avoid technology because sometimes I'm my best friend, plus my 13-year-old daughter isn't here to help me. So I want to reiterate what I shared with the planning commission, and that is we welcome the coming Greenpoint development. We're the neighbors, we're gonna be the neighbors for this plan, right? Columbia County is growing exponentially, this project will certainly accommodate the upcoming residential, commercial requirements. We expect that the project will move forward tonight, but we would like to make just a small adjustment to just one piece of the plan. Following the planning commission meeting, we had more time to review the county code ordinances and modified our concerns, recommendations somewhat. Our conditions, our concerns, excuse me, are primarily focused on, one, the mixed-use plans for the tract located tax map 030, parcel 083T. Secondly, what, and it addresses to some degree, the lack of a detailed traffic management plan in and around the area. What we're mainly concerned about is Wrightsboro Road. And in the second page of what I just handed you, I'll highlight that, and I'll come back to that in a minute. And third, what appears to be, and we'll address this with the board of education, but what appears to be empty optimism from the board of education to regarding future school capacity, right, to support this development. So we'll address that with them. But to be clear, our zoning concerns are focused on parcel 083T and no others. The Greenpoint team presented a land use summary, or he referred to Mr. Millington as a master framework plan. That's slide one of what you have in front of you. At the planning commission meeting, the notes, different, the commission meeting, excuse me, that slide you see there notes, commercial, residential, mixed-use development, labeled MUD districts within project. On page 37 of their, of the Greenpoint project information file, the zoning for the MUD spaces are said to be, quote, "similar to Columbia County zoning R3A, TR, AR10, C1CC, and P1, with commercial uses consistent with code section 9097 to include microbreweries and brew pubs," end quote. Overall being, again, I quote, "village residential to village commercial in character," end quote. County code does not have village, residential, commercial zone equivalents. Secondly, we feel that the proposed 30-foot buffer along Wrightsboro Road is insufficient to preserve the rural setting that attracted us to Hatcher Glen to begin with. Along I-20, 50-foot buffers are planned. And the last concern for this particular parcel, and Mr. Millington did acknowledge to the planning commission, is that the framework of a plan is conceptual, meaning that the final project may be adjusted more as this is developed. We also learned of the plan, as we talked about just briefly, its phase approach, roughly five years each, and that's outlined in their information packet. But the later stages, later phases of this plan aren't really discussed much in the information packet, and that's what we'd like more information about, particularly as it relates to the area east of Aplin Harlem Road. So I would like to, I'm gonna infer that development won't really begin in that part, the eastern part of Aplin Harlem Road until about 2030, so we're hopeful for that. But, so our requests for parcel 083T is to add an approval condition to simply remove the option for community commercial CC-type development to include no brew pubs or microbreweries regardless of the zone coding. This would allow the parcel to retain its mixed-use designation for residential, as in multifamily, professional, or even neighborhood commercial C1 development with conditions. Hatcher Glen is coded R1, therefore, we would prefer similar pairing with another residential zone, like referring to that same slide I gave you, RD1 and RD3 on the western portion of the project, north and south of Wrightsboro Road. The county staff acknowledges that within the Greenpoint plans, quote, "the mixed-use portion includes a village, commercial, and institutional character with uses similar to the county's C1CC and P1 districts with the additions of microbreweries and brew pubs." And although current county code allows for microbreweries and pubs to operate as long as the revenues, revenue is 51%, 49% food and alcohol derived respectively, that slight majority only matters in elections, though they are not acceptable immediately adjacent to our single-family homes. County code section 9094 states, "planned unit development proposals, quote, 'must be compatible with the character of surrounding land uses,'" end quote. So we contend our existing residential neighborhood is not compatible with the intended commercial usage across the street. Second recommendation for 083T is to increase the minimum buffer width along Wrightsboro Road from 30 feet to 50 feet to perpetuate the rural aesthetic and traditional setting for western Columbia County. Lastly, we ask that Greenpoint publicly publish the plans for the later phases of their project, say that five times fast. So our second major concern is the lack of a detailed traffic management plan for the county, from the county, to support future vehicular flows through the area. And forgive me if they exist, and if so, please point us to where they are so we can look at those over and assuage our concerns. The Greenpoint team did provide traffic studies, however, they center on the impacts to roundabout. That's in the next page, if you look there, at the intersections of Wrightsboro and Aplin Harlem Road, and not much further out from that roundabout. So we're asking you to guarantee protective movement for us through the only ingress and ingress point to our neighborhood, denoted with a circle on the second page of what I handed out to you. City of Harlem expresses similar concerns in the DRI final memo and report. So a wait-and-see approach regarding infrastructure support to this development plan just simply won't suffice. Our request then, should road widening occur, as we expect it will, this should be taken from the north side of Wrightsboro Road, given the land is yet undeveloped, to mitigate disruption to the existing Hatcher Glen properties. Moreover, with the anticipated increase in traffic to our area, we will not have a protected left turn onto Wrightsboro Road. We need a traffic light, stop sign, or some other mechanism at the intersection of Drayton Way and Wrightsboro Road to ensure we can enter and exit our neighborhood. Further, we ask that next phase of the project include a detailed, excuse me, traffic management plan for the roundabout, the Aplin Harlem and Wrightsboro Roundabout, and its thoroughfares extending a minimum of one mile in each direction. So the report would be nice to us to, again, assuage our concerns. Traffic is already congested around Harlem Middle School currently, and opposed to, traffic officer is not a viable permanent solution. So I know I'm out of time, I apologize for that, but I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Breath?
Yeah.
By all means.
Well, I tried to.
Ready to go pass out?
Yeah, I mean, council and staff, y'all kept up with this, or, okay?
You know, I'm a military guy, right, they say five minutes, we gotta do it, so. Anyway, so pending any questions then.
Job, no, I'm just kidding.
Mr. Snipes, we do read your mail, and I read yours, and I had a question, a couple of questions from Mr. Sterling. I'll go with the easiest one first, and the traffic is always a concern. And I walked Hatcher Glen a long time ago. Yeah, that's right, a long time ago, I actually used to ride my horse out there before even your home was there, okay? So that area has changed a lot.
Yeah, we're emblematic of this change. Part of the reason why this is happening, so.
Exactly. So I went through, I went through the Greenpoint traffic study, I couldn't keep up, sorry, Mr. Castle. And so I asked Mr. Sterling about it, and we talked about future access to Greenpoint and how it's gonna require a GDOT review and approval on the design. And it's not part of the preliminary study, but it is gonna require input from the GDOT. And that said, I'm gonna invite Mr. Schlochter to expand on that a little bit.
Absolutely. Department of Transportation will not blanket what you're gonna do until you come back and tell them, here's exactly where we're putting it. Until they come back and say, put in a restaurant, or we're putting houses, or we're putting shopping center. I will not comment on what's required, so this is a route, we have no authority to tell them what route, all that. You come in, the state will actually take into consideration Hatcher Glen. Hatcher Glen and make sure that whatever's done to Wrightsboro Road does not impact negatively Hatcher Glen. We've experienced that many times over, actually right across the street, the big, large lots on the southern side of Wrightsboro Road. They actually tried to get some driveways for that section already, and there was a single-family gravel driveway, and GDOT refused to give access point. Rest assured, GDOT is on top.
Mr. Snipes, in your, in your presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the things you talked about was the compatibility with the Vision 2035 Plan.
Yep.
Have you, have your questions about that been answered?
Yeah, so that's what I try to, that's why we really want this to be as, we prefer as much of residential development there in this tract as possible. To understand there's gonna be a transition right from the residential, the neighborhoods tracked in that plan, that is south of Wrightsboro, actually southeast of Wrightsboro and Aplin Harlem. So we want to facilitate that transition right from neighborhoods to commercial, albeit light commercial activity. So if, you know, we would prefer, albeit townhouses or apartment complexes as opposed to some other type of business initially, and definitely not anywhere that sells alcohol as of the proximity, obviously, to our neighborhood. Yeah, the chairman Cox, I think his name is, in the planning commission, referred to the 51-49 ratio, and I said, that's, I have chances to rebut. But yeah, 51 on one hand, 49 on the other, that's six in one hand, half a dozen on the other.
That's the difference in a pack of fries.
Man.
So you also referred to questions about education and the schools and that. Did you get your questions answered about that? And how schools are built and how they don't really build ahead?
Yes, I did learn, I did learn in the last meeting, I think we, many of us understood, we didn't realize, or I didn't at least, that sales taxes didn't go to building schools, or they do go to schools, is that right?
They do, they can only be used for capital.
And then income tax goes to paying for salaries.
Thirds of the property tax goes to the school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, yes, that was never a concern, however, we have some neighbors that are and other friends that are employed by the school district, and they do not concur with whoever the staff referred to from the board of education that the pace of development would keep up, or rather, the school district could keep up with the pace of development. So that's why I think unless there's something you all can tell me about it, they will refer to the board of education for that one.
They're not built for, we might have extra students, they don't build ahead, they don't make them too big. So we generally end up with a few portables before it's budgeted to build those bigger schools. And that's unfortunate, and there's no fun, but.
I think schools are like roads.
They are.
Yeah.
Can't get the money to build them till you have the students, totally backwards.
Right.
You can't get, you can't make major road improvements without some type of splosh, which is what we do, or state or federal funding, and they won't give you the money, the people are already there.
We just.
Say, plan ahead, get the road built, I got bad news, can't get the money to do it.
They will not accept projections or any sort of, matter how much strong the.
Trey's on the state school board, he can.
Had to have somebody, almost get killed at I-20 to get him to widen the exit ramp at Grove Town.
Which we're looking forward to, by the way, they're at 183.
Yes.
So we're looking forward to that very much, so. But yeah, so I think, and Mr. Gillius has, you know, addressed this directly, sorry if I butchered your name, but no, we, you know, the traffic is a concern. We look at, some of us have been around the area for several years, I've only, we've only been here for two years, and we've been enamored by the county, and you know, we've set roots here now. So when I retire from the military, I'll probably stay here. But the lure is that Grove Town expanded so fast, right, and it just couldn't, fortunately, the infrastructure doesn't keep up with that pace of change. So that's our major concern. Look out, and obviously the trees, as we look forward, you know, from our houses there. But understanding that change is gonna happen, right, this is, this is gonna happen, but we would like to see a more nuanced, as I phrase it, transition from the neighborhood section of the development plan to 2035 vision to the commercial areas, that's all we're asking for.
Mr. Snipes, I'm gonna return to you, and you had a concern about a brew pub?
Right, yep.
And we, I would rather have people eating than drinking.
Yep.
Which is why we have our formula, and it works for us. And I'm not being dismissive, but have you looked at that Exxon and seen how many 424 packs come out of there?
Yeah, yeah. But the difference, I would argue, is that they're not supposed to remain, right? They're not supposed to loiter and.
Don't have a permit to drink on site.
Right, so they pick up and go. So that was, so although there should be eating, right, to soak up some of the alcohol as reading, nonetheless.
Technically, we don't approve bars.
Right. Right, but that's why I use the verbiage that's in the county code, right, microbreweries and pubs, because they would sell food in addition to alcohol, so.
You had a question about the buffer?
Yes.
30 versus 50, you said?
Right, and it's just, it's just to, again, create some, some space, or to increase the green space and retain that, that rural setting. We see, so in that second slide I gave you, Drayton Way, which is our only ingress egress point to our neighborhood, that road will effectively continue in the tentative plans that you see for Greenpoint, which is totally understandable, makes sense, but there's going to be obviously an opening there to create a street, so we want to try and maintain that buffer, that's as much as we can, right? And also, there, and I didn't address it here, but the signage, I know there will be necessary signage for either residential or commercial developments that goes there, we want to try to minimize that as possible, too, because our RD1 equivalent neighborhood will retain that status, if you will.
I believe the signage was addressed with Hill in the plan as far as monument signage and style and.
Not a major concern of ours, not a major concern.
Great, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Elaine Howell?
Afternoon, everyone. How are you doing tonight? My name is Elaine Howell, I live at 2948 Old Thompson Road in Appleton, Georgia, and I just want to thank you for allowing the residents of Columbia County to speak regarding the plans for District Four. We all agree change is coming, and we have the opportunity to work together as a whole with the commission and the developers and the builders to make sure that we have created and follow the Vision 35 to help guide us in the direction to preserve the rural development and direct growth in areas not designated as rural communities. By reviewing the map that was outlined on the Vision 2035 Plan on the website, it is showing the area in question as Appleton Harlem Area Neighborhoods and Appleton Harlem Employment Activity Center. Has the map been updated from the original Vision 2035 Plan? Final reports from, I believe, the DER, number 3084, states that the proposed project is located in rural area on the regional developmental map. And why I'm bringing this up, because I would like to, I know the change is coming. I mean, the RD1, I wish I could see the lot sizes increased, that is a small number of 17 for out of 832 acres. The RD2 with 212. What worries me the most is your RD3 at 800. I'm not quite sure with the mixed-use units, that is new to Columbia County as far as the extent that they would like to go, and doing my research, I cannot find much information on the UTA code or in Columbia County for the mud requirements. So, I mean, and I know that is later on down, years away from getting to a lot of the mixed-use land, but the RD3, 800 units of apartments, townhomes, flats, that does not envision anything that will help envision and protect a rural area. And that is just the main concern, I would like to see that hopefully we can work and maybe come up with a kind of different plan to reduce the number of RD3 units, and maybe increase the RD1 and the RD2. And with staying with the rule, they are showing a high density of one to four units per acre, and if I'm not mistaken, in the current, being in the rural area with the Vision 35, you would have to stick with the one single-family unit per two and a half acres in the rural communities. Proposal for PUDs must be in compliance with the corrector, with the character of surrounding land issues. PUD in this area does not comply with the surrounding land use, and I'm not quite sure about the waste management. The majority of everyone I know in our areas, we're still under septic tanks. This area here is just now being developed, are you bringing in sewers, are they all going to be in sewer tanks, are we going to be able to comply with that, especially with, you know, 800 units under RD3 and then mixed-use of 700 that would be living and businesses? And once you bring in that gap, and you bring in the waste management, how are we going to ensure that the county commissioners do their due diligence in the future to keep this from encroaching further into rural District Four areas, and to make sure that we are protected? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sauer question?
So there is sewer available for this land, actually, the sewer line was installed by the Prather family, I'm not sure which of their companies did it, but I know the Prather family members paid to have that sewer installed. Did make it very clear to Mr. Prather when he came in that we would not guarantee that he had capacity for this development, as he brought back concept plans for each phase, we would then make an assessment if we had available sewer. If the sewer is not available, he will not be able to build the small lots, he'll have to stick to the two and a half acre lots to build those. If capacity is available, we will provide that to him, and then he can move to smaller lots.
No sewer, no small lots? Basically? That? Also, there are no apartments in this, correct?
No apartments, apartments, like you would think apartment complex, there's some multi-tented units.
Townhomes.
Townhomes, maybe even a quadplex. Quadplex, but not a true apartment complex like you would think, Washington Commons, Earl Old Evans, or Roundtree Boulevard, Roundtree Way, or quadplexes.
Ms. Joanne Murdock.
Evening, my name is Joanne Murdock, I live at 1547 Swent Road, that, in an area that was previously referred to as that old pumpkin center area. Thank you for hearing from me tonight, I've emailed all of y'all.
Oh, yes, you have.
It's nice to meet some of y'all that I haven't met before. I'm here mainly because of the size of this rezoning request, the 800-plus acres is so large to consider in one swell swoop, and the fact that, from when the county offices were closed, it was advertised, what I saw, as being only essential services were open for business. So I was under the impression, essential services generally mean public safety and utility services, that type of thing. Yes, your offices evidently were open, I had no clue that y'all were seeing submitted plans and reviewing them and approving them, and didn't know what was going before the planning commission. I feel like the majority of the population out there was following along with the shelter in place, but it was sprung very quickly, and I would appreciate if y'all could table this at least. I understand that there's going to be developing, occurring, I'm not against that. This large 800 PUD is not consistent with the rural area out there. When I bought my property in 30 years ago, it was five acres, my neighbors bought five acres, we want large land, smaller, you know, not the house on top of each other. It reminds me of a situation that y'all just went through a year ago with River Island. The zoning that was accepted X number of years ago allowed them to come in and build apartment complexes, or put apartments there, and the whole surrounding area, it caused an uproar, and your hands, your hands were tied because that zoning was done so many years in the past. With his plans for this 800 acres, he's looking at 25 years in the future. There's going to be people that moved to this area that have no clue that it was a previously, 20 years ago, zoned for a PUD, and now I can't do anything. So I'm just asking if, if nothing else, at least table it for the night, set it for another meeting, so more people have time to review what was, what is included in this plan, and reconsider rezoning the total 800 acres. And that's just such a large landmass in a very, very rural area of the county, and we like it that way. The people that are residing out there like the rural setting. We don't want, the people that have replied to petitions and online stuff, they don't want to be living in an area that is so compact that you have your Martinez, Evans, Grove Town traffic situations going on. And I know that Harlem, the city of Harlem, did offer their comments about their concern about the traffic that would affect the left turn signal or left turnability at their red light in downtown, and that's a state route, I don't see how they are going to be able to widen that intersection, they've got a historic building on each side. So the only alternative to that would be a bypass around Harlem, which would require y'all to, wherever you decide to put a bypass.
It's in the T-Splosh.
Well, I'm not, I don't even, I'm not even talking about the money, you're taking somebody's land, even if you're paying them for it, you know, you're still destroying some of the rural aspects of what drew me to the area 30 years ago. And I just would like y'all to consider at least table in it, if nothing else. Thank you.
I would, I would say that you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that the bypass is $6.5 million project, only one asked for by the city of Harlem, and will run a course from Clearcut Road down to Lewisville Road, which is in two parts asking for traffic, but also mitigating some of that traffic. In addition, the 183 exit project is online, and it's let out, and I think we're seeing cones and flags out there right now, aren't we, Mr. Schlotter?
Yes, sir, completion date of July 21, I believe, is what it's, 5/22.
I'd add, by definition, from the governor during the, the whole COVID issue construction, considered essential services by definition during his executive orders, and our construction services here at the county were wide open, working, getting everything done, and didn't miss a beat. Appreciate all of our folks working hard to do that, so I hate it for the, if there was any misunderstanding, thinking we were shut down, but our guys were working, our folks.
Without going into detail, I understand that construction was working, but in any notice that I saw regarding county offices, it didn't say, planning and zoning is open, and we're looking at reviewing plans.
They weren't open for people to come in and visit and be in our.
I think what I'm getting at is the public information that was put out was not clear, so nobody, because there are people that just do nothing but sit online and look at submitted applications to see if it affects them. I don't think anybody that thought that this was going on during the shelter in place and all the offices being shut down. So when the planning commission had their meeting, it took a lot of the District Four population by surprise, like, whoa, wait a minute. And, I mean, the applications themselves don't have certain dates filled out on them, so we don't even know when they were received.
Were they not online, Mr. Schlotter?
They're online, the applications are there, and the applicant has filled in the date that he completed it, but the office review portion is left blank. And it's just, I hate that there's some citizens out there that were under the assumption, and I'm in the construction field, sort of, so I was actually working, too, but I hate that there's people out there that think that the offices were closed and did not realize, so they don't have the opportunity to come and look and really understand what this project consists of. The magnitude of the acreage, I just see a River Island situation occurring 15 years from now.
What do you do, Ms. Murdock?
Um, I do building permits.
Oh, for Harlem?
I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't want to bring that in, I don't want to create a conflict.
She does a fantastic job over, I've worked with her several times in Grove Town, she does a fantastic job, I do want to say.
Okay, so you work for the city of Grove Town, okay, so you're familiar with the process?
Didn't mean to throw you under the bus.
No, I was just.
Hope that didn't hurt.
Sorry, I'm surprised you didn't.
I am familiar with the process, and I'm just, I'm, because I live out there, I'm concerned. The rural setting is what draws people out there, they're not buying that land for 2.4 units per acre. They're buying it for the Hatchet Glen situation, they've got acre and a half lots.
Is that our number, 2.4 units per acre?
You look at the overall development, that's what it comes down to.
Yeah, depending on who you read, it's either 2.4 or 2.6. Yeah.
Ms. Murdock, were the planning offices in Grove Town open during this period, handling business?
We did not have customers come in, but yes, we were nine to, nine to 12 is what I worked.
So do you have a communique that indicates who's closed, who's open, we're not accepting any customers?
I have no idea what the city put out.
Well, now, I'm looking, I'm wondering if you just have any communique in writing that indicates that.
I have no idea. I, I have emails to my builders, yes.
No, from, from the.
No, I, I don't, I don't handle the public.
I'm talking about the board of commissioners, our board of commissioners and our.
From y'all to us? I'm confused by the question, I'm sorry. Did I receive anything from you saying your offices were open?
Did you see any communique that indicated that we were not open for business for any reason?
The public notices on Facebook.
For any reason?
The public notices on Facebook said county offices were closed except for essential services. Somebody not in this field, I knew because I was in the field, your average citizen, in their mind, essential services typically are public safety and your utilities. The average person doesn't consider planning and zoning as being an essential service. I can understand why it is, because we, the whole reason why I was willing to work nine to five, because I could have, I mean, nine to 12 every day, because I was given the option of staying home, but I didn't want our construction people to go without, so. That answer?
Yes, that's an answer.
Dates that we have, we received, they dated the application March 6th, we have received is March 16th of 20, original public hearing date of 4, 2 of 20, Board of Commissioners meeting date of 4/21 of 20, all those were postponed because of COVID.
So was this plan out there on the 16th of March?
Received on the 16th of March, we still had to get it into our system and get it uploaded for the public to see, I don't know the actual date that it hit, I'd have to ask, but received the application prior to county businesses being shut down to public entering our building.
And the signs that go alongside the road, notices, they were.
They were put up when, when we finally realized we could start having meetings, or the governor allowed us to start having meetings again, public meetings, we, with our method of having the public meeting, the planning department actually advertised per requirements at that time to make the.
So, wait a minute, so you say that you got, received the application or notated March 16th, and the signs were put up 15 days prior to the hearing? What date is, what date is that?
It was the 21st.
21st was the planning commission meeting.
Was the planning commission meeting? May 6th, so the signs would have went up May 6th? How'd you put the signs up if you don't receive the?
See the application March, the signs went out in May.
Okay, okay, okay.
Just, I can only speak for myself, I think, so, what, that was two weeks ago-ish, we had the planning?
Mm-hmm.
Thursday, so how much time is enough to review the package?
Well, I mean, for 800 acres and 167-page document, that's, for people, I mean, I don't know, I don't, you know, it depends on the intelligence of the person trying to look at, I guess.
I see the time, I see, because I'm just addressing your question, question postponed, and I'm, I take a step back and say, okay, if it was out, it was out two days before the planning, then that would be two solid weeks, I didn't go through it till then in detail, right around the planning commission, so I've gone through it to understand what it is, and I just, where's the line of not enough time? That's, that's all, I'm not asking, that's what I struggle with.
Yeah.
And if it's that important to me, and actually, I went through it in an afternoon, granted, it took time.
Well, I mean, I've been trying to do my part. Believe me, I've been trying to get the word out, but, I mean, I had 100, over 100 people sign the petition, which the petition was done nothing but for me to gauge the feeling of the community around. So, and the signatures that were done on the online thing, I got those 100. So, and the signatures that were done on the online thing, I got those 100 signatures in 24 hours. But that was when it was hot and heavy, the week of the planning commission meeting. So...
Murdock, I followed your petition. First of all, with that petition, it was hard to tell where in Georgia someone was when they signed it. And I'm considering that you probably eliminated the votes from Austria, Germany...
I mean, I did look to see where people, yeah.
Austria, Germany, New York, Wales, and I know Chile weighed in as well.
I, I did look at that.
Okay, you eliminated it.
They might own property here, do you know? You know if the person in Chile owned property?
Very good point.
Very good, thank you.
Alrighty.
No more comments, thank you.
Right, any comments? Comments, questions? Well, I did, you know, I, my perspective in situations like this, and then I responded to you, Joanne, that I try to take a step back and look at situations twofold. One, how does it impact, does it impact the community in a bad way? If somebody wanted to put a nuclear dump, rural Columbia County, I mean, that's almost laughable, right? It just wouldn't happen. So, but I, I see situations, situations like this, and growth is going to happen, and this is well planned, I always go back to, what is somebody's constitutional rights? They've owned the property for 75 years. And how do you take that away from somebody when, when a constitutional right is to profit from your property? And, and so, it, these, this is the hardest, these are the hardest things we deal with. But again, I always take a step back and say, is it going to harm the community? No, yes or no? And two, how do I protect landowners' property or rights to reasonably profit from their property? And it, one of the biggest challenges, like I said, is people step in, they don't want us to take action on property. I get that. Not all 800 acres. Fair enough. Fair enough. But just, how I weigh situations like this, get back, now, I took an oath to uphold the Constitution, and the Constitution guarantees people a right to profit from their property. And if it's not going to hurt citizens, it's not going to hurt the county, then I try to do the best I can to make it work for all parties, because realistically, growth is going to happen. And you're right, I, I, there's a valid point here. 30 years, 30 years, I'll be 80. You know, 30, 30 years, I won't be sitting here. And so, as much as we can button this thing down, we should. But balancing somebody's constitutional rights to profit from their property is, and it doesn't hurt the county, is, is how I weigh things, how I weigh these issues. Yes, ma'am? The person who owns the land not selling it to them?
They already own it.
Changing, changing what's in the PUD.
Well, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you meant 1,600 acres.
I mean, the 1,600.
Yeah, they would have to come back and, would they have to go through this again? Would they not?
No, ma'am, I, 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 I'm afraid I have to, I was here when we went through a very painful moment with the county, where we were in a, in a lawsuit with some, some people that were just a few feet down the road. And it was, it was made very clear that the plan itself, as well as the narrative, is part of any submittal to our planning department. So they're not, they do not have carte blanche, they do not have, have a blank check. They have to adhere to the, the core integrity of the plan as it is originally submitted to us. And, and our counselor can verify that. Unfortunately, that was a, that was a painful, painful experience we had to go through, but we did make sure that that was forever embedded in our, in the way that we do planning and zoning here. So it's not, it's not carte blanche. There's no way that they can just go off script completely. The plan as you see it is part of what we will be voting on today.
Now, they can come back and request a PUD revision. They can do that, but it starts a whole process over, and we go through all of the public hearings, notifications, and all of that. But they can do that if they would like somewhere down there. But it wouldn't be just poom, flip.
Any other debated questions? Is there a motion?
Well, sir, as the, as the, this falls under my, my committee, it is, it's my duty to come up with a motion. I, I have read, read this report. I'll be honest with you, in my opinion, it, it is one of the most comprehensive, best-thought-out plans that I've, I have seen in my 12 years on this board, and I mean that very sincerely. There is concern, I, I understand, about the, the size of it. 800 acres is a giant program, a, a, a very big process. But as we spoke about, it is going to be done in phases, and that's the reason for that. We, we have a, we have to find a middle ground where we can take large parcels and plan strategically because they're large parcels, and, and rather than, than piecemeal one at a time, not to pick on our neighbors, but I think that's, someone said that's how Grove Town happened. Have a, a vision of, of an area instead and work on it in segments, I think, is, is really the best method that we can possibly use. And we decided on that a few years ago as a county. We, we started developing land unit developments and residential unit developments and multipurpose, mixed-use developments. There's always going to be concerns about new development. One of the questions in my mind is, if we were to turn this down, what happens to that 800 acre? It is their property. They have the right to parcel it, sell it, break it up. As Mr. Snipes said, development's going to come. I mean, that bypass is in the TIA. It's going to be built, whether it's, it's built right now or in 10 years or whatever. That development, it's, it's an interstate exit. It's going to come. We're building, we're building an, we have a world-class office park right of, right down the street. It is going to be developed. And I believe that the efforts made for this plan exceed, far exceed, I'll be honest with you, almost anything from anyone I've seen put forth. And so for that reason, I will make a motion to approve the request of rezoning from R.A., M1, T.R.D., and C3, two PUD for property located at tax map 029037B, 057030, 034048A, 048B, 039A, 036, and 038, and tax map 030038 and 038T, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission report.
Second.
Does he have a discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Kill me. I make a motion to approve the major PUD revision to revise the rear building setback to four feet for property located at tax map 061889, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission report, and to approve entering into an encroachment agreement.
Second.
Ms. Patsey Weaver? Please. Are there any questions?
The, the motion's to approve, so unless you want to argue that...
Quick, sit down. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion's approved. Go home now if you want.
I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Section 90-59, List of Lot and Structure Requirements, to reduce the side setback for the property located at tax map 001A199, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission report.
Second.
So to allow them to add an addition to the side of their house. This is up close to the lake. Narrow lots, had this covered patio, would require them to get the side setbacks, just allow them to extend that if you approve.
Any questions?
We have one clarification. Just make sure that clarification's...
I'm sorry, I didn't, it says Section 90-59, is that incorrect?
Agenda does not match the motion.
Five, three.
I amend that motion to state Section 90-53, List of Lot and Structure Requirements.
Andrew, second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion carries.
All right, where are we? We need to, we...
The door?
Close that door, please.
Can't.
Okay, you're at 14, is that right?
I'm thinking I'm at 13, am I not?
13.
I'm at 13.
13, I think.
Correct, Ms.?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Section 90-53, List of Lot and Structure Requirements, for property located at tax map 072004U, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission report. See, if I just read ahead, I would have had it.
Second.
This is a situation where we have a structure that was built inside the existing setback. Contractor did not have the permit and built it without the permit. Variance would allow the structure to stay, and now, structure would have to be...
Questions? All in favor?
As an addendum to that motion, I believe I have to make a motion, deny the request to waive half of the application fee for a total refund of $650.
Second.
Question? All in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, I'm sorry. Technically, you're supposed to reg, ask beforehand, but just real quickly, go ahead. No, okay.
Come up and...
Go ahead, come on down.
Give your name, sir.
I'm Woodhams, 4587, Hardyman, Manas. The reason I had requested the, the second half of the variance, I've paid for the variance, obviously, but the property, and I sent an email to the commission, I'm sorry, to the planning commission, I believe. This building was not supposed to be built. I was out of town when it was done. I contracted, contractor was not done in the timeframe it was supposed to be completed. And he started that while I was gone without a building permit. He was paid to do a building permit, and when I came back, it was existing. So I've paid for a variance and requested a variance, and I appreciate you allowing that. But I was just trying to say, it was kind of a second penalty to me to have to pay the second portion of the, for the variance, because the builder did not do what they're supposed to do. They have been reprimanded, y'all took them to court, and y'all come with, I haven't heard, but he's been addressed and taken care of. And I didn't, I never authorized him to do that, that location or while I was out of town.
Did you ask him for a refund of the money since he cost you this?
Uh, he went, no, he went to court, he's, he's out of the picture, he has nothing, I had no contact with him whatsoever. Nothing to do with the project anymore.
Unfortunately, for, for you and all of us, there's a lot of time from the staff and spent on this. And, and although that's, you didn't ask for the whole drama to be in your yard, it is, and, you know, out of fairness to taxpayers who pay for the staff to be here and, and straighten these things out, this, this is a cost of doing business for us. I would suggest, though, that you ask that builder to, you know, to make you whole.
What happened, Matt?
Were found in favor in that case. I'm not sure the exact penalty that was imposed upon the builder, but he was found guilty of charges.
Builders, under your jurisdiction, under your, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not under that, so I'm just, you know, I feel like if there's something needs to be penalized to him, I feel like that would be between you and, and the builder. I did what I felt was supposed to do, you know, hire a builder that's licensed in the county to do the building. He was supposed to have it done by the contract by the 31st of July, because I was going to be out of town for six weeks, and he did not even start it by then. So when I got back, it was 80% done. He did tell me while I was gone that he had started, and he was contracted to, and a location that would be acceptable to, I mean, we, we went out and walked around where it's supposed to be, obviously, but it was supposed to be within 10-foot setback. But this is directly, you know, penalizing me as the homeowner versus contractor or the variance, I understand, I'm paying for that, and I've already paid for it, I have no issue with that, but it's just the penalty being, place somebody for the second portion of that, really kind of redundant, in my opinion, because the contractor has been taken to court and has been pressed because he did not do what was proper.
Did you also take him to court in addition to what the county...
Have not, I've just severed all, all ties with him.
That a civil issue between the two of them, Mr. Schreiber?
Time was spent.
So I guess what would be the purpose of the builder having a license in the county? Guidelines, just feel like that, there's, responsibility lies on them. If I hire, the only thing I can do is hire someone that is, you know, licensed in the county. I cannot force them, they're not representing, he didn't represent me because I did not allow him to do without a building permit or to come have, you know, to make sure it was in his, in the setback.
Did he have a building permit?
No.
So then no plans were submitted, so the county had no idea it was over the line?
Submitted, it was denied.
And he went ahead and built them? So the county...
Right, and I was not even in the, in the county, I was in the state at the time. I was gone for six weeks. And, you know, I, I never authorized that. I mean, yes, he, I guess he's representing me, but, I mean, somebody that represents you is, oh, I did not authorize or approve any of that, nor did any of you, because obviously that's why he was taken to court. And I feel like that should be the penalty in case versus homeowner that hired, went by, I did go by your guidelines to say, hire a contractor. And to my knowledge, he's still doing business in this, has been doing for years. I mean, this guy's been around for years. I, I, he's built other things for me, so I don't know why all of a sudden, properly, but having to pay for that. It's not just having to pay for this variance, this is miniscule compared to what it's cost me, you know, outside of that, the cost of the building, completely botched, and then top of that, now I have to go through the whole process of retrospectively going through inspections and everything else. So I don't even know what's involved in that yet, but asking for one, you know, consideration that...
We just passed a...
I didn't authorize that.
Pass the variance.
Pass the variance.
And I appreciate that. But variance is two parts, one being that I pay for the variance, and there's a penalty that's attached to that, being double, because it was placed in, or it was done prior to
I get it.
Permit being pulled, which, again, it was not something that I can do or did do. I mean, I don't have the ability to go pull a permit for a contract.
$1,200?
Correct. $1,230, and that's what I'm asking. I have no problem paying for the variance, I'm being charged a penalty in addition to the variance because the contractor didn't pull a permit.
We have a, I thought that was a... Code, code was changed at the request of the, at then, at that time, the, I think, not the building, Construction Advisory Board. They came to the commission, requested that we put a penalty in place for people that came in after the fact to get their permits or their variances. And that's what this, I, I missed that part when you called that up.
Builder didn't do it right the first time, so I'm paying for it as the homeowner.
Unfortunately, you contracted with someone who failed you.
Licensed through, they're not something beyond...
He's a, if he's a state contractor, he has a state license, and we have no, state license, we have to allow him to do it.
Like that, like, just the way you explain that, is that it's costing more, had to go back because it was not pulled, I agree. And I have no issue with that, except that it should be put on the builder, not on the homeowner, in my opinion. That's the person... opinion. That's the person that can pull that contract, or that, that permit, not the homeowner. I'm, I'm not the one pulling that permit. I contracted somebody to do that, but homeowner, I can't.
Ms. Malira, as a builder, are you not an agent for your clients? Are they not held responsible for your actions?
Ultimately, but as, you know, we have a contract that says I will take care of all permits and
Right, so they actually have action against you?
Actually, yeah, it's, it's a civil penalty if I don't do my part. And you could also go to the Secretary of State and, and speak to the licensing board about his failures to to uphold his end of the contract.
What, what did the county take him for then? I've got to say.
Thank you.
Motion is out there, sir, and I believe there's a second.
And I, frankly, I don't have a turning things around if y'all want to. But, so there's most on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand? Opposed? Press on. Mr. Raymond Smith?
Fourteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep jumping ahead, I apologize. We, we have like eighteen items, and that's way past my math grade.
Item fourteen, I make a motion to approve the request for variance to section ninety dash one four seven G ten B. Use provisions to increase the hours of operation to twenty-four hours a day for property located at tax map zero two nine zero three seven E. We're in this area a lot tonight.
Mm-hmm. Your second?
Second.
This is a, this zoning is approved, this is simply a variance to allow them to remain open twenty-four hours a day.
Any of the neighbors complain about that? Hey, does anybody care, anybody spoken up, complained?
I've heard complaints about the twenty-four hour part.
What have you heard complaints about?
Heard it all tonight.
Oh, okay.
You wanna run out there and get the man from Hatchet Land to save-
No, 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 no.
Get him back in. Anyone wanna go into the backstory of why this condition is there, or should we just let that lie?
Any more discussion?
Lie. Okay.
All favor, raise your right hand? Here he's, now. I apologize. You've been here for the last two torturous hours, you know that you're supposed to give us your name and your address for the record. You're welcome to our, my longest committee commission meeting.
Last time was a little bit rougher. I think I was the last, uh the last-
You're moving up the ladder a little bit, huh? You're getting out.
I'm moving on up. Second here to kick in. Well, um, I'm not here to oppose the Augusta Christians' uh, developing-
Oh, yes, amen and address.
Okay. Raymond Smith, I'm at thirty-six twenty-two Phillips Drive. I'm a neighbor of Augusta Christian. So I'm not here to, uh, oppose Augusta Christian's, uh, new development entirely. However, I'm here to address all the numerous approvals I've seen with conditions and the conditions having happened in over, uh, two decades. Now, I've been running around the military for the last thirty years, so I hadn't been able to make many of these, and I've seen a, a lot of changes, and I'm here today just to make sure, after discussing with the headmaster and some of the Clum- Columbia County Board members, to make sure some of those, uh conditions actually take into effect. You know, and I wanna address a few of those as I put this presentation together, you know, and living in this particular home, uh since two thousand and two, Augusta Christians is a person of a lot of properties, properties adjacent to me, and I made my attempt at trying to get a few and couldn't get any. And they got them all, but my question to Augusta Christians is, why has it taken so long to pull them back into the campus? They still look like they still a part of the neighborhood, and they were, got in trouble between two thousand and two and two thousand and eight, where they were still using those buildings zone R two. You know, so they have special conditions to pull them back in. And so, uh, the neighborhood, we wanted a few things done from that perspective, uh, when they put different interests on the backside of the school. That caused a lot of traffic congestion for the Phillips Drive and Lake Shore folks, because folks were dodging the Baskin Road exit to come through that. We were a private owned road that became county, so the right of way is not that big to have a whole lot of cars zooming in and out here, folks dodging the, the main gate. So we were promised a few things back in oh-eight that didn't happen. Uh, preferably, we were supposed to see some trees and some fencing that should have got built that never happened. So aesthetically, what we did end up with was uh, increased parking due to the fact that a lot of the adjacent properties around it, they started putting signs up saying no parking for a lot of the business. So that pushed a lot of people parking into the neighborhoods. So we've been trying to work through those issues, but as we started looking at some more changes hit the table here in twenty-eleven, you know, those trees were promised, but they didn't show up. So we saw new fences go in. However, the privacy and noise increased. And so the main reason why I'm here today is to address the fact that with the new recommendation for changes and some new building that they're asking for that setbacks and green space be taken consideration, I'm really pushing hard for. And I got a few pictures here, uh, showing that bad when you're-
Reese, can you help him?
I got it. So as you can see in my drawing here, uh, the green bar, uh, shows you where there should be trees and fences put at. Uh, the two buildings that concern me, I'm the building with all the cars there, since I moved them from Texas, New York, and everywhere else that I was stationed. Uh, that empty parking lot there is, it's an actual, serves as an overflow parking lot. And there's a proposed building going here that's gonna be extended. Uh, the building here is gonna be extended into, uh twenty-six twenty-three's lot. And my concern was when that extending in there, you know, the trees that they have in there now are that Z's type trees, and you're taking those out. And they gotta go with the board and see if they can find some better than those trees that they had. I'm really pushing hard for some type of fence, because there is no security to any of this property. These properties, and I don't know why Augusta Christian is not pushing for some type of security to separate them from the neighborhood. So I'm looking for something like that to be developed, and I was promised that it would be done from the new headmaster, I'm putting him on the spot right now, since we spent a lot of time outside talking about this, he's guaranteeing me, but I wanted in the minutes to make sure that it does get done. Because I've seen twenty years of promises and hadn't seen it done yet. So I'm here today to make sure that-
Yeah. Augusta Christian owns the lot on Phillips Drive, is that like egressing into a neighborhood?
They've, they've bought all the properties along that side of the road.
Okay. I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
So for, for the properties in that, it's, the questions and things that I had for my biggest concern was if that building extended into the property, that it, it didn't say anywhere in the comprehensive plan of what that building would be. You know? Based on all the years of folks saying they're gonna put one thing, and it turns into something else. You know, I'm trying to get ahead of making sure that doesn't turn into a daycare or a summer camp with a rock climb and slides right in my front door. So I'm just trying to make sure that I get some privacy, you know, I've been promised to be the last hot on house on the lot, so that I could at least sell it with, for that point that you know, I'm, I'm next to a private school, but aesthetically, as it's looking, is not working for me, because there's nothing really separating me from those old properties that's been there for almost two decades, so I'm looking to see when they tear that last one, twenty-six twenty-three down that it doesn't turn into something that, other than a playground that's already there, that, that added during the two thousand and eight that that playground is not extended, or it doesn't turn into any more activities of that nature. Yes, sir.
So, sir, are you concerned that we're not able to enforce the conditions that have been imposed, or that we are imposing in any future? Or are you worried that we need to put more conditions on, um? Are you saying we're not able to enforce existing conditions? Is that what you're saying, or, or are these issues with the school?
Well, what I'm basically saying is, uh, prior up until this last, this last request those conditions keep carrying over to the next advisement or request for change, and none of the conditions are being carried over and being done. And so what I'm saying is-
Keep kicking the can.
Exactly. Two thousand and eight, the same tree line was on that request. And it, and then here it is again in twenty twenty. Uh, again, showing up saying that we're gonna put a fence and a tree line to aesthetically make that look better. And I'm just making sure that it does get done, that's why I'm standing here, because I'm not-
Oh, eight, was it part of something that went through the commission?
It was, Mr. Strickland's got those, the details. It's just Scott Strickland.
Strickland.
Scott Strickland!
He hasn't gone on a long time.
We are regressing.
We're calling back staff members who left years ago.
Mr. Sterling.
He's gone, sir.
Like a family reunion around here.
I think, you know, the issue that, you know, Mr. Smith raises is valid, they've been in each of these different revisions, for whatever reason, and I, I certainly can't speak to those at this moment. Why they haven't been implemented, there I will say that none of the conditions have a timeline associated with that, so, you know, when you make a condition and put it in there, if there's no timeline, there's there's a certain amount of activity that can, can be done by staff, I think that's something that we've talked about internally. But this latest revision is, is that we need to make sure that this gets done.
Are there timelines on this one?
Do we need to-
There can be.
There can be.
Timelines moving forward, I mean, if they're, if this can just-
And I think we've had a pretty open dialogue, uh, with staff and Mr. Smith and, and the headmaster, Mr. Walden who, uh
Walden, Walden? He's back there.
Yeah, Walden. That, that, there is some, there is some understanding of what, you know, needs to happen, and you know, the timeline in which that shouldn't, should occur.
Come on down. Les, how are you?
Well, thank you.
State your name and address for the record, sir.
Les Walden, forty-three seventy Deerwood Lane, Evans.
So from a timing standpoint, have you, Smith, have y'all talked about?
Uh, I didn't talk to Mr. Smith about the timing, but when I talked to Ms. Mystery in the department, we talked about a six-month timeframe to what I proposed. I actually proposed a fence a little bit longer than Mr. Smith had requested, so that I can divert all the traffic off of Baston Road that prior to that went in. If you look the bottom right of that dark green line as a driveway-
Finger, you can draw on the screen.
Right here. This is a driveway to our business office, which is located right here. And I said we would extend the fence on down past that driveway so that everybody would have to come in here go to the business.
You're gonna eliminate that access?
Sir.
You're gonna eliminate that access?
Yes, sir. They'll come through our main parking lot.
So then guys have agreed, putting, putting a six-month limit or six-month requirement on this plan works.
But I'd just say years in.
Close enough.
It's actually a condition from the Planning Commission that says six months.
Okay, it's already in.
Does?
No.
I didn't see that, six months.
So so is this all the conditions talking about from years back, ten years ago, or is it just on the new stuff?
Of course, I don't wanna speak for him, but where I'm drawing here is the original tree line and fence that we put up. And I wasn't there in oh-eight, but apparently the property here was supposed to have a fence and tr- and a tree line, which we've done, you can see each of the trees there behind it. Going on down here this, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, from here down here that fence was actually grandfathered in, it was about that far from the road, and last year, we actually put a new fence up, because it was falling down. Put it further back from the road for to help him out as well. I wasn't aware that we needed trees there. We could certainly put some plantings there. There are other uh, there's shrubbery that was there from houses before that we left in place, we just didn't put the tall cypress that, you know, get thirty foot tall, which is what's down the other area. And, and just to I don't wanna belabor this. God, it asked me-
Oh, go ahead, we're past that point.
Yeah. I was at the planning meeting, he was at too, so we were here well past this. Uh. As far as the timing, just so y'all are familiar with what we do you know, anytime a piece of property becomes available that you wanna purchase, you're not gonna not purchase it, because you may never have the opportunity again, so yes, we purchased it and we've left houses up and hadn't put a school building up, but we maintained the yard and the houses and everything while we planned. And while we've been approved for some things in the past, just like everybody, especially in that mid-two thousands range, we were impacted financially, we couldn't do some of the things that, you know, we, and I say we, I wasn't there then, but that they wanted to do at the time, so that's why there have been changes and why there's been some delay in some of the development. A lot of it has to do with finances.
I understand his point. But my point is that a lot of those, that overflow on-street and off-street parking is on my lawn. So I spend a lot of time calling Columbia County out there or towing folks, because folks are just not considered of this peach orchard that we live on. Since it's a peach orchard, folks get out of their cars after they park on my lawn and start picking up peaches. I'm like, you know, you realize, you know, you're on my lawn, so-
Those folks would be very offended at that.
So I, I, I don't, I don't disagree at all with that, that fence coming all the way down, and it's a proper fence. You know, so whatever happens on the other side of it, I'm fine with. I'm just trying to limit some of the parking and fencing issues that we have there to at least control some of them, a lot of this is out of his control as a sheriff office. However, you know, a lot of folks like to take shortcuts by coming through the neighborhood, and they're not doing the speed limit, and they're just basically speeding through this place. And we're just trying to do some traffic management and to grow with their growth management plan. However, from what I've seen over the last twenty years, it's just a little, it's just a little bit too slow. You know? How long does it take to put up a fence? You know, they could hire me. And I I'll be more than happy to put a, build a fence for them. You know, 'cause I've been building on this house at thirty-six twenty-two for almost ten years, as I go around the countryside, so-
So if they run the fence down like he's saying, and they block off that entrance, then no, there's not gonna be direct access from the school to your Phillips Drive, so hopefully that will solve some of the problems.
That'll solve a lot of problems, 'cause, uh, a lot of folks are using that little bypass by his admin building to make another road, because it's easy to get to the campus without going out to Baston Road, they just go across the grass. And that's an eyesore for me, you know, I'm like, hey, put something up there, or, you know to pull your traffic in. I'm not trying to be a, a hard in about all of this, but I, I'm just having seen anything done from, from our perspective, to make it look like a ne- the neighborhood is separating from the campus. And so that's what I'm looking for, you know, and he's willing to work with me. I hadn't had anyone work with me up until this point, you know, each time I come back each year, I see something change. But I don't see anything changing for the positive impact in the neighborhood is impacting it in a negative way.
Mr. Smith, can we go back to item, uh, image number two? Which, and which, um, which property is yours, thirty-six twenty-two?
I'm, I'm here.
And all, all of those cars are not yours?
Absolutely, after thirty years, you know-
Are all of them titled and tagged?
I, every last one of them.
I'm impressed.
A lot of cars.
That's a lot of cars.
Did the neighbors complain?
Oh, I bought ten acres out in Deering to, uh, move my cars, you know, 'cause a lot of them are collector cars, and I get rid of collector cars. So when you retire from the military in thirty years, you have a lot of cars. Because you buy a car and a house everywhere you go. So, and- So, and, and so a lot of folks can agree with me on that, you know, with nowadays you got an old car, you know, they're selling on eBay for 50, $70,000 for an old model car.
Yeah.
So I'm going after that market first before I decide just to get rid of anything. So I had to collect them someplace and so I brought them there as a hub while I'm building on my land in Dearing, a store shop, so I'll, I'll store all those cars there.
Okay, I just want to make sure that wasn't Augusta Christian folks parking in your yard.
No, no, no.
Okay.
That would be rude.
That would be bad.
You know, but when, when Augusta Christian fills up that other parking lot, imagine what that looks like.
You could probably sell parking spots, like...
You know, but, you know, after I spent over $100,000 building that house, you know, adding to it, I probably wouldn't sell it cheap because it looks like all the houses out there at Westlake because I built it like that because I'm pretty good. But that's what I did.
So does this, is this, the, the way the package is together, does it solve your situation?
It does, so it, it does answer a lot of questions I had with what the staff proposed and the headmaster was basically telling me what they're going to do. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be lost words after this board is complete that I go another 10 years and I see new buildings and I don't see a fence or I don't see any trees. I just wanted to make sure.
Maybe even they can expedite it before school starts.
We'll tell you what, Mr. Smith, if they're not done within the period of time that they've set forth, come back and see us, speak to us again.
And we'll put him on devil's secret probation.
It does seem like you guys have a dialogue now and, and, and he's willing to work with you and, and so I do not need to add anything to this motion because that six-month time limit is in this, in the conditions.
Well, is what the staff, I'm sorry, with Mr.?
Smith.
I'm trying to see what...
Ocas?
Smith.
Starting to get drowsy, it's past his bedtime.
Not so good. We had the headmaster, Mr. Walden, Mr. Smith, and then the conditions, those are in your motion.
Okay, so I can, I can read this motion as listed. Six months currently okay with you, sir, and, and it does sound again like y'all have a dialogue. I get the impression maybe he'd be willing to try to do it faster if he can. So is that all right with you?
That's all right with me.
He's actually a good guy. I've known him for a while, so...
Hey, you know, he, he knows I work in Cypress, so I can actually see a few. I have a few resources. I still work for DOD.
How about a motion?
I, gosh, it's a long one. I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the current S1 zoning for property located at tax map 082A104, 105, 105A, 106, 107, 108, and 109 for a proposed building expansion and additional athletic fields subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission report and to require that the fence and landscaping will be along the full length of the southeastern property line along the frontage of current parcel 3621 Phillips Drive and to the finance office located at 3619 Phillips Drive to prevent access onto the school property from Phillips Drive. The landscaping buffer will be supplemented with trees and shrubs to create a substantial visual buffer.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from R3 to C1 for a property located at tax map 077B170, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission report.
Currently a house, this is across the street from our fire station headquarters, commercial building.
Not in the neighborhood?
On the corner, it's right on the corner, it sits, diagonal across the lot.
That headstone place across from it? The headstone place across from it?
Right there. We did have at the planning commission, the neighbor, and spoke to us about that buffer was there, buffer not tear it down. One comment we did receive. It have people speaking.
And that's worked into the conditions.
I have a question. What is thoughts on County Evans Road for his nightmare with traffic, trying to make turns, where you going, whatever? What is the thought process moving forward? Is there a line that we're looking at stopping like Murray Road or somewhere below that or, it looks like everything below that is residential.
Probably top and point. Light transition. Go any further to the actual houses in neighborhood? This, this property here actually fronts Old Evans, property does not.
Questions?
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Harry's 4-1.
Chairman, this next item, I won A17. I would like to ask any discussion take place before I make my motion. I'll be honest, I'm of two minds about it and I know that there are some feelings around this board and I'd, I'd like to have it discussed.
John McKnight? Josh Thomason with you or y'all together?
Yeah, I'm John McKnight, this is my partner, Josh Thomas, and we're both with Piedmont Housing Group, talk about Town Park Senior Village, which will be a 74-unit, 55 and older, independent living community. For respect for everybody's time, I read through the comments that were in the agenda packet from Planning Commission, you know, rather than go through all those again, you know, just, I'd be happy to go ahead and address any issues, questions, concerns anyone has.
Sure. Do you consider this a senior living facility or just apartments?
It's an independent senior living community. So, so it's, there'll be one and two-bedroom units, it'll be independent living, which as opposed to assisted living, we won't have what typically is in assisted living where it's, you know, there won't be meals, there won't be onsite nursing care, things like that. It'll be a community that's basically just deed restricted for seniors, individuals 55 and older.
So as apartments, there's not a dining hall, there's not a salon, there's not a movie theater, this is not, this is not a senior living facility, this is apartments where everybody goes their own way.
It'd be a deed restricted, multi-family community. Yeah, I mean, I guess if you'd consider that apartments.
So the sole determinant really age, 55 and up?
That's correct. And there's, pardon me, there's only one and two-bedroom units.
I was looking through what, what you can, would consider the amenities in here. It looks like one washing machine per 25 units. That's a lot of people using one washing machine. Can you tell me how that, it could be 50 people.
That's one coin operated washing machine per 25 units. Each unit does have washer and dryer hookups.
But they're not provided?
They are not provided.
Tell me about your staff there. Who all will you have on site? Will you have your maintenance man living on site? Will you have an attendant living on site? Will you have staff living there with your...
We will not have staff living there, but we will have a full-time property manager that'll be there Monday through Friday full-time and a full-time maintenance person.
By full-time, you mean 40 hours a week?
That's correct.
And on call the rest of the 24/7?
Mm-hmm, that's correct, in case there's some kind of an emergency.
So there's not staff living there?
There, there will not be staff living there.
So there's not services? This is not a service type?
Correct. It's, it's a more active senior living, you know, as, again, as a, you know, to contrast it with the assisted senior living where you have a lot more folks that need, you know, memory care, a much higher intensive level of care and of services. Generally, these are folks that are more active seniors, folks in their late 50s, 60s who, you know, were, you know, still, still active, you know, still perfectly capable of living on their own, but maybe don't want the burden of, you know, having an upkeep on a home by themselves, a lawn, things like that. And they also don't want to be a burden to family members as well. So we kind of provide that sort of gap in between, you know, a lot of folks outgrowing the need of having their own, you know, independent home and before they really need to go into an assisted living facility.
So will your community, your property manager, will he or she be a cruise director of sorts, you know, providing activities? You know, is there a van that takes some driving Miss Daisy over to Target? Is this...
There's, there's community activities, you know, certain, you know, birthday, birthday activities, you know, they generally do monthly activities, but, you know, is, is, so there is a, there is community activities here, but it wouldn't be, you know, something where they'd, you know, organize outings and such.
It's apartments. Apartments.
It's, it's, it's a multi-family community for, for active seniors.
So what makes, what made you want to do apartments instead of the memory care that was originally zoned for?
Well, really, there is a need. We, we also own Horizon Senior Village that's in Grove Town, which is just right down the road. Horizon Senior Village has a 330-person waiting list. There is a very...
Now is that apartments also or is it a service community?
It's the same, same model as this, you know, slightly different building type, but definitely same model where, you know, deed restricted, independent senior living. And we have a, so there's a very strong market and a strong desire for this type of product because the issue with a lot of the independent living facilities is, you know, you start getting into, people have to pay for the services in those communities and you start looking at $2,000, $3,000 a month, which is just frankly out of a lot of folks' price range.
So if the one in Grove Town's doing so well, why didn't you put this facility near it? Why did you want to put it in the heart of Evans?
We don't want to have one just right next to one where we, where is already there and we've, you know, been looking around Columbia County with, you know, our goal would be to spread it out a little bit and this site seemed, seemed like a good location for us.
And you didn't feel like the memory care services or assisted living or whatever it was originally it is currently zoned for, you didn't imply that was a, a good fit for your company?
It's, it's not what we do. We, we don't do assisted living, memory care.
So have you already purchased the property or is contingent upon the rezoning?
It's contingent upon the rezoning.
So if it does not get rezoned, you will not purchase it?
That's correct.
The only question I have is just with dealing with cars and the traffic. 74 apartments?
These are active seniors, so I assume there'll be at least one car per unit.
You have a large parking area there, you're assuming...
116 spots.
God, that road, it's on the expansion list. It's a, T2 has to pass, right?
It does.
That's correct.
Currently in design, we're using NPO dollars to design the road and we're actually working on carrying the right-of-way dollars to start purchasing right-of-way for the road project, but the construction dollars are in T2.
If it passes, though, we can bond, but you're talking...
We're probably three to four years, if, if you were to bond it, we're still three to four years from start construction, five years out if we don't.
Okay.
So there are...
Any other questions?
Not at this time.
Motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to deny the request for a major PUD revision for proposed 55 and up independent living senior property located at tax map 072A350, 349, 348, 065, 064, 063, 074, 073, 072, and 071, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Is this the last one? I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for a variance to section 7443 subdivisions with private roads for property located at tax map 04119, 019A and a portion of tax map 041018, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 21st, 2020 Planning Commission report.
Second.
I'll step up here because I got a draw. This currently is, as designed, is a private road. To meet our standards, the lots, it's going to be a private gravel road. To meet our standards, lots have to be five acres or greater. This parcel here was not part of the original plan. When Mr. Prather approached DOT about getting his permit for his driveway connection here, DOT denied it based on the existing driveway for this lot here. The district engineer reached out to me and asked if we would consider allowing this existing parcel to have access to that new private road so that these could, we wouldn't have a driveway conflict on Wrightsville Road. Code says you cannot create a new lot based on five acres. He's not really creating a new lot, just asking for access to this private road from an existing lot.
And it's 2.4, 2.4?
2.44, yes, sir.
And is there any discussion from the neighbors?
No. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Harry's? Legal matters yet to be determined after this meeting. Request for review by committee, I still don't know what that is. Public comments?
Please tell him what that is at some point.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring one.
Jeez, oh Pete. My last page. I think that's it.[1781.53]